All right, I would like to bring the 2022 Planning Commission Reorganization Meeting to order at 7:07. Uh, I'll call the roll. Mr. Capuzzi, Mr. Shannon, Ms. Dobbs, Mr. Fierdymondo, Mr. Garrett, Ms. Phillips. I'm so sorry. Um, hmm. Mr. Montresor, yes?
Yeah.
Wonderful, good. All right, everyone is present in a calendar for. So, uh, I would like to, uh, seek nominations for a chair for 2022. Do we have any nomination?
No nomination.
Do we have any discussion? No? All in favor?
All in.
Wonderful. Anyone opposed? No, wonderful. Congratulations, Mr. Capuzzi, and I will turn this meeting over to you at this point because I do not care for doing this.
Okay, thank you, folks, for your vote of confidence. I appreciate it. Um, I'll open the floor to nominations for Vice Chair. All right, I'll nominate David Shannon for Vice Chairman. Wait, uh, any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations for Vice Chairman. Kelly, could you call roll, please?
I think that there are no other nominations. Uh, all in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. Congratulations, David. And I'll open the table up for nominations for our Board Secretary.
I nominate Maggie.
All right, I'll second that nomination. All in favor? Any other nominations for Board Secretary? All right, well, close the nominations for Board Secretary. All in favor of accepting Maggie Dobbs as our Board Secretary for this year? Signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, you got it. All right, uh, before we start our regular meeting, um, I'd like to congratulate David Shannon for being reappointed to the Planning Commission for a four-year term. Uh, David served for the last three years, correct? Two and a half, okay, so he's got a full four-year term ahead of him. And also like to welcome our newest member, Louis Montrezor, which is French for my treasure. Uh, Louis is an attorney by trade, and more importantly, is a Villanova graduate. So, Lou, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Okay, President. Sure, just want to first say, um, I'm thrilled to be able to serve on this commission, and hopefully I'll be able to make valuable contributions. About me, I just want to say that we moved here in 2008, uh, because we wanted our son to be in a good school, and Lynwood Elementary turned out to be excellent for him. And to reward our choice, we got the Phillies winning the World Series that year, if I recall correctly. So, it was a great start, and it's been wonderful ever since. So, again, I'm looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you, Lou, and welcome. Um, and then finally, I'd like to publicly, publicly thank Chuck Reardon. Chuck retired from the Planning Commission this past year, and he served the township uh, on the Planning Commission for 17 years, and he was first chairman of the Historic Commission, where he served for six years. And I'm going to miss his little, uh, stories and history lessons about the township. Chuck knew more about Havert Township and the history of the township than anyone I ever met. So, um, thank you, Chuck, and good luck with your future endeavors. There's a couple more things we have to clear up. We need a motion to appoint someone as our scribe for 2022, and I move that we appoint uh, our current scribe, Maggie, Matt, Marge Buchanan, to serve in 2022. Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. And then, uh, we have to, uh, agree on our calendar for 2022, and there's a list of dates with basically the second and fourth Thursdays of each month, the exception being July and August, where we only meet, uh, once in the month. And then November, we don't meet on Thanksgiving. And December, we don't meet at Christmas. So, all in favor of adopting the 2022 calendar for the Planning Commission meeting? Please signify by saying aye. Now, that's approved, and then finally, our meeting shall convene at 7:00 PM. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. I don't think we have anything else. Okay. That's all the administrative stuff. Uh, our first item on tonight's agenda is a preliminary final minor subdivision plan for 1801 Manor Road. Sleepy Valley Holdings LLC. I see our applicant is here by Zoom, or was here by Zoom. And Dennis O'Neil from McCombi Associates is here to present the plan.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Chairman Capuzzi. Again, my name is Dennis O'Neil. I'm an engineer with Herbert McCombi's office in Brumall, and we prepared a plan on behalf of Sleepy Valley Holdings, uh, for a proposed minor subdivision at 1801 Manor Road. Site is Zoned R4 Residential, which permits single-family dwellings on 6,000 square-foot lots. Existing tract is 12,737 square feet, contains an existing dwelling and driveway, and associated improvements with that single-family dwelling. And I note that the driveway to 1801 is shared driveway with 1721 Manor Road. Um, we also note that the porch of the existing house and the bay window, uh, extend into the front yard, and in accordance with Havert for Township ordinances, in order for us to subdivide a lot within existing nonconformity, we are required to seek relief from the zoning hearing board. And we have made application for that relief, and we're scheduled to appear before the zoning hearing board next Thursday night. The subdivision proposes to create two lots. Lot one will be 6,236 square feet, and it will contain the existing house. It will conform, uh, to the zoning requirements in all ways, except for the existing nonconformity, which will remain unchanged as a result of the subdivision. Uh, Lot two will be 6,001 square feet, and it's proposed to be developed with a single-family dwelling, uh, driveway for two cars, and associated improvements for stormwater management and grading to promote the water quality and, uh, rate controls that are required by the stormwater management ordinance. Uh, it's a, it's a pretty minor subdivision. It's creating a single lot line, uh, to separate the two lots. We are requesting two waivers, uh, as it is a minor subdivision. We're requesting a waiver, uh, to permit, uh, a preliminary final plan, single-phase, uh, approval process, and we're also requesting a waiver from the requirements to widen the right-of-way, uh, to 50 feet. The current right-of-way is 45 feet, and the cartway to 25 feet. Uh, the current cartway is 24 feet. The site does have sidewalks running it, so there's no, uh, need to expand to add sidewalk to the street. So, um, we believe that, uh, would allow us to seek that waiver so that we don't need to, to provide additional right-of-way. As I noted, we will be before the zoning hearing board. Um, our, um, issue there, again, is the existing nonconformity. Um, we're not creating any nonconformities. We're not creating any, uh, new zoning issues. So, we believe that we can, uh, can receive that variance because we're not increasing or decreasing it. The stormwater management system consists of a, uh, subsurface spread basin in the front yard, which captures significant portion of the impervious cover that we're adding to the lot, and infiltrates the, uh, stormwater so that there's, um, less surface runoff after construction than there, there will be. We are asking for relief, um, from the tree commission in order to, we would need to provide, uh, 14 new trees, uh, on the site, and we're going to provide five and ask to pay a fee in lieu of, or provide the other nine trees to the township, uh, for use throughout the township. But the size of these lots and the other trees on them, uh, would not support additional nine trees throughout the site. Uh, so we tried to get as many on there as we could. We did receive the January 26th review letter, uh, from the township engineer. I can go through those comments, but first, I'd like to, uh, with permission from the Chair, approach and, and provide you with a photograph. This is the, this is a similar house that, um, Mr. Spazato built in the township and recently sold, and it's, uh, pretty accurate to what we're proposing on this site as well. Uh, so it gives you a feel. It's two-story, it has a single-car garage, uh, in the front. The, the house that we're showing on our plan is mirrored to that. The, the garage is on the, I think the garage on that one's on the right, and, or left, I'm sorry, and we're on the right, so, but, um, if you'd like, I can start to go through that. There's comments.
Where's this house located?
Uh, I believe it's on Harvard, Harvard.
Okay.
Similar-sized lot, though.
Um, I'm assuming, if you go through the letter, you're going to basically say you can comply with, with making whatever adjustments have to be made to satisfy the comment.
That's correct.
Are there any, are there any comments in particular you want to discuss in detail?
No, there's a couple comments I want to discuss with Chuck, uh, the township engineer, but, uh, we can do that as an aside, uh, and then we'll make the changes and submit them.
Okay, um, here, you want to pass that out to people in the audience so they can see what you're doing? There's a couple more here, too, then. Okay, um, we're opening up to questions from the board. Lou, you have any questions or comments you'd like to make about the plan? Okay, Rob? Maggie?
Yes? Let me fill it up again. So, I had, uh, so when I initially reviewed this, a couple things kind of popped out to me. Um, one was the, was reflected in one of the comments from the engineering review letter, which would be a regularly shaped lot, how it kicks back at the end, presumably to achieve the lot coverage that's required for, for the lot. Um, but typically, lots, lot lines should be perpendicular to the roadway, um, so the creation of this irregularly shaped lot is somewhat concerning for me only in that, um, people will assume that the property lines go straight back. Um, any kind of fencing or anything like that, there could be, um, issues with property disputes in the future, even though it would be clearly articulated in the deeds that these are the property lines. Um, I, I do have concerns about the creation of, of a irregularly shaped lot like this. Um, the other thing that was concerning to me was the proposed species and location of all of the street trees. Have you gone before the tree commission yet?
No, we need to do that.
Okay, so I'm sure they'll go into more detail with this, but, um, I see that there's a lot of existing trees on the site that are going to be removed, and the number of trees being replaced on the site to compensate for the replacement. Um, I know that you're not able to fit all of them, that's why you're offering the fee in lieu. However, I think this lot is too small for the size and number of trees that you're proposing. I think that it's proposed, I think it creates, um, encumbrance on future homeowner of this lot, have to use these trees, um, and are like, going to cut them down because they're going to want some more, um, done, frankly. Um, so, I can't recall, can't, that's, these people, so, the, the main issue was just that this plant is not, because I believe, where's your, the trees in the front were...
The, the street trees in the front were eastern red bud?
The eastern red buds.
Yeah, we're here.
So, these, these are beautiful trees, um, and very curburet. I just don't feel that having two of them planted so close together, um, they can grow substantially large. Um, and so I feel like they're going to be very crowded and not, uh, have healthy canopy if they're planted that close together. Um, I do also have some concerns about the other trees. So, we have AP, which is the, so the Japanese red maple, and then we have the flowering dogwood, um, towards the back of the property, and then CP.
Person ironwood.
The person ironwood. So, I was doing a little bit of homework on some of these trees, taking a look at the, uh, mature size of them, and I feel, uh, some of these, the flowering dogwood may be an exception, but I believe that some of these will just have too large, uh, mature canopy, uh, for the location on the lot, the proximity to the home, and that type of shade as well that they're going to shed onto the adjoining property. So, as a whole, I feel like, um, the selection of trees and the location of them, uh, creates a presumption on the future property owner of the new home, as well as places the, um, kind of a substantial shade burden on the existing home, um, that I'm not sure is going to be suitable, uh, for the property owners. I think that that is something that they may want to make a decision for themselves. So, I would recommend potentially reducing the number of trees on the site, which is not something that you typically would hear me say. Uh, but I think we should be considerate of how close these homes are together, and the size of the trees that they're, uh, eight, uh, and increase the fee in lieu. Um, if the future homeowner does, if you, I don't know if this is going to be a sale or a, but, um, but if that's something, if you do have a, a buyer, um, and they want the trees, that's something that we could potentially consider. But overall, I think that shade tree commission is going to provide some, um, additional insight, but I just want to raise those concerns because I feel like I can waste too much on this lot in order to meet the tree replacement requirement. Um, and I don't want to create unhealthy conditions for the future trees, um, or create, um, unwelcome circumstances for the future property owners of both the new home and the existing home. Um, otherwise, uh, can you clarify, is this going to be a deck right that you're building off of the back?
I'm sorry?
Uh, off of the back, is that going to be a deck?
Patio.
A patio. Uh, upgrade, right?
Upgrade. Yeah. Decks, decks cannot extend into the, uh, rear yard setback, but the patio can.
Mm-hmm, right. And that, so it's supposed to be?
In the front.
At the front there. Um, and that, I'm assuming there's drainage grate in the driveway?
There is, yes.
So, one of these homes that looks very similar to this was just built the street for me about two, three years ago, and I have to say, one of my main concerns with that is the, the drainage grate for the driveway is real sloped in kind of an unsuitable manner, and it creates this big dip. And the driveway itself, can you tell me how, what's the distance from the sidewalk to the, the, the garage?
To the edge of the garage?
The front, yeah, so to the garage door.
About 36, 37 feet.
Okay, so, is that reasonable, that two cars fit one in front of the other in that distance?
Yeah, I mean, your parking space is, is 18 feet, so, two 18s are 36.
So, the problem that I have with that, and this is something that happens on my street, and it's incredibly frustrating for me as a pedestrian, is that two cars will try to fit front to back with each other, and they will just block over the sidewalk. So, I just generally have concerns with creating these conditions where the driveways are just enough where you can kind of fit two cars on them, but not quite long enough. Um, so, I don't know that there's a good remedy for that, but I'm only raising that as a concern because it happens all the time on my street, and I know it happens on other streets as well. And when you're trying to walk home with groceries or push your kid in a stroller, it, you don't want to be trying to go out in the street, um, to, to go around these cars that are blocking the sidewalk.
There's two.
And there's, and there's the side parking as well, right? Because I know that this is a, so it's a one-car garage and a two-car driveway.
Correct.
They could park side by side.
So, they could park side by side. Um, that would just be more of an enforcement issue if that, if that comes about.
And there's, there's room, the driveway's shaped wide enough that a car parked in front of the garage, other, another car could get in.
Yes, and I did see that, which does give a little bit more flexibility for parking. Um, but the grate itself, how far is the grate off of the sidewalk?
Grate off of the sidewalk is, I believe, about six feet, five and a half feet.
Okay.
Just trying to scale it right now.
Again, I'm using my personal experience here, but the drainage grate on that way from that new construction on my street, um, it just kind of gets icy near it. So, I would just caution that the grating of it, uh, be sloped in such a way as it doesn't create a ponding effect as to create any sort of icy conditions that could potentially, uh, drain onto the sidewalk and cause, um, hazards for pedestrians.
Yeah, and this, this driveway is not very steep coming into the site.
Mm-hmm.
As well, so that will help. The water will be slow enough coming off of it to get into the grate.
Mm-hmm. And then where are the downspouts connecting into from the house?
The downspouts are connecting directly into the basin underground.
And that's from the rear and the front?
Rear and front, yes. The entire roof area is connected to the, directly to the basin.
Okay, those were my, um, those were my main concerns. So, primarily the, the irregular lot configuration and, and just the, the overall impact of the, the trees. Um, and again, uh, would be interested to hear what the shade tree commission has to say, particularly with the, um, the two front trees, but if they have any other, um, comments for the lots, the, the proposed trees for the remainder of the lot as well.
And we'll look at spreading those out. I think we were trying to keep them on the new lot construction, but it, it is possible that we may be able to put one closer to the, the proposed lot line on Lot One instead of both on Lot Two, which will spread them out across the street.
Well, I, I both.
But the eastern red bud was selected because it doesn't grow as high, and there's electrical lines on this side of the street that we have to try to stay under.
Understood, and that's a good consideration because, um, certainly you don't want something that's going to, to block into the power lines. I, I just, anything that's too close to the property line, though, I, I mean, telling you from personal experience, just dealing with fallen limbs, it's, it's always kind of a hazard when you intentionally put trees, kind of splitting property lines, because then you have neighbor disputes about who's responsible for maintaining that tree. And so, if we are going to put trees somewhere, I would almost rather that they be more clearly on one side of the property line or another.
We'll take that into account. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Kelly, do you attend the, uh, shade tree commission meetings?
No. Do planning, zoning, and historic, uh, Board of Commissions, that is, one night off that I have. Uh, that is Joe Celia, Code Enforcement.
Joe Celia, okay. Will you communicate with Joe so he's aware of Maggie's concerns about landscaping?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, David?
Thanks. Um, good evening. Um, the, um, you're applying for a variance with respect to the, uh, nonconforming uses, uh, nonconforming, uh, dimensions on the existing lot?
Correct. The front yard setback is nonconforming currently.
There's a reference here to area and other requirements in the district. What are the other requirements?
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't have any other zoning issues. Both lots will comply with zoning, except for the existing nonconforming.
Thank you. And, um, also on the issue of trees, I, I know you'll be going to the shade tree commission. Do you have a date yet for that?
I don't.
Um, there, the report of, uh, the township engineer also points to drainage and runoff issues, water intrusion in a basement issue. Additional concern is the removal, really clearing a lot of the existing trees is going to, my experience, makes the drainage worse and, and makes any water runoff, exacerbates any existing drainage and runoff issues. I would just urge you, if you can, to hold on to as many of the old trees as you can. 162 inches of removal is, is a lot of removal. That's all I have for now.
Okay, Lou?
Um, I have two questions. One, is there going to be modifications to the existing house on that property?
There are no proposed modifications to the existing house.
So, we're just outlining on the plans how big that house could be if you wanted to put an addition on it, or knock it down and rebuild something there?
Well, we're, yeah, we show the required setbacks, the, the sides and the front and rear, um, but that would, that would be typical for any lot to demonstrate that we're compliant with the zoning.
Is it possible to change the, the will design in the front of the property so that you don't have to remove the magnolia?
Well, once we put the driveway in, we're going to be under the canopy of the tree and in the root zone, no matter where, what side we're on.
It looks like if the driveway was on the left side of that house, then it wouldn't be in conflict with the magnolia.
I think it would still be in the root zone, and that's, that's the issue. But we can look at it.
We also have the seepage bed out front, too. I don't know, flipping the driveway is going to accomplish anything because you still, you would have to flip the seepage bed.
Yep, got to move the, see, got to move the bed, the basin also, if you want to keep the magnolia. Now, magnolia appears to be a large portion of the removed inches of trees.
It is because it's several trunks of, of trees. It's a mo, it's, it's a multiple tree.
No other questions?
Um, the waiver request for the cartway, isn't township standard 27-foot cartway? Not 25, right?
Yes, it is 27-foot standard.
So, your waiver request should note a 27 required foot. Um, do you know if you're planning to have sewer service for the basement of the new house? Or is the basement too low to get?
The basement will be too low to get, get basement service to it.
All right. And, um, does Mr. Spazato own the existing house also?
Um, he is equitable owner. I, maybe I'll let him answer that.
I do not own it yet. I'm equitable owner of the property under contract right now.
Okay, so you're, you're buying the entire property, and then you're going to take ownership of the existing house and then flip it, I assume?
Um, not necessarily flip it, but, uh, uh, maybe sell it, maybe, uh, rent it back.
Okay.
Really not, yeah.
All right. Um, my, uh, I have a concern about the utilities servicing the existing house, in particular... My, I have a concern about the utilities servicing the existing house, in particular the aerial service to the existing house. It cuts across the back of the new lot. And our ordinance does require that utilities be installed underground. I understand this is an existing condition, but is there any way we can redo the, I guess, electric phone and cable service to the existing house from Manor Avenue as opposed from pulling the back of the property?
That was going to be our response to that comment, was to relocate the services to the street.
Okay. That'll help clear up the backyard, and then you won't have a conflict with proposed trees and aerial services. And then, one technical suggestion, in the seepage bed design, can you interconnect the pipes within the seepage bed so that the water is evenly distributed over the entire bed? Most of the runoff is going to come from the house, and that's all taken by one pipe as opposed to spreading it out over the entire bed. So, if you were to interconnect the pipes within the bed, that water would be better distributed, I think.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, Dennis, we really can't take any formal action this evening because you don't have your zoning approval yet?
Correct.
We can't recommend approval to a plan that's non-conforming as far as zoning. So, what I suggest is you make revisions to the plan based upon the township engineer's review letter, factor in whatever comments you might get from the zoning board or the shade tree commission, and then resubmit so that we can hopefully take action on the plan. But I see there's a lot of people in the audience, which is unusual for the planning commission. So, I'm going to open up the floor to anybody in the audience who has questions or comments. I want to start in the back row, all the way in the corner here, and work my way across this side and then go to the side. So, anybody in the back row which can make a statement or ask a question? Come on up. Yes? Please state your name and address so our secretary can get it on the record.
My name is Rebecca Burnett. I live at eighteen oh four Manor Road, which is directly across the street from the existing house and proposed property.
Okay.
So, my husband and I, who's also here, Adam, have several concerns. First of all, as a newer resident on the street, we've been there for about nine years. I think I can speak for most people that have moved onto the street, that it's got quite a bit of charm to it. All the houses look similar. You know, it's a very family-friendly house. I agree with many of the comments you said about walking around cars when you're pushing kids. I have three of my own. So, that's one concern. My second is the amount of water drainage from a new property. Our house in particular, we've taken water three or four times since we've lived on the street. We also moved down to eighteen oh four from eighteen twenty-four. We rented that house for a year before we bought down the street. We took water in that house, too. So, we've revised our basement several times, and it's all been groundwater. So, not runoff from our house, but ground seepage from underneath our house, which adding additional impervious surface, I feel even with the basin, would be largely affected. The other concern that we have in our home is the location of the driveway, parking on the street, which has become increasingly less. We have one parking spot in our driveway, so we park in the street, which is directly across from the proposed driveway and would essentially eliminate parking, more parking spots for us. So, those are our main concerns.
Okay, just so you're aware, the township requires two all-street parking spaces for each dwelling, okay? And I guess theoretically with the garage space and the two spaces outside, they're providing three parking spaces.
Yeah.
Which is, which should at least account for the one space you lose in the street where they put the driveway cut.
Yeah, just making mention that it's already crowded, so.
They've met their requirement as far as the township code goes. As far as storm order management, again, the township has a pretty stringent ordinance that controls runoff from a new development, and our township engineer is quite diligent in making sure not only that the design is appropriate, but he also inspects the project during construction to make sure it's built according to plan. So, Dennis, have you done infiltration tests yet?
Yeah.
And the rates are good?
Good.
All right. So, they've tested the soil, this infiltration base, what it go, and the ability of the soil to control the water that's going to come to it is very good, is from what the tests show, okay? I just let you know that's-
Supposedly.
Okay.
We've also gone two foot below the bottom of the bed to make sure there's no living zone.
Okay.
We had no water, groundwater here, at least two foot below the bottom of the bed.
All right. So, from the bottom of the bed, they measure another two feet just to make sure there's no rock or any clay or anything like that, any water that would adversely impact the operation of that seepage bed?
Yeah, and I can understand, you know, all that they've put into it. I'm just mentioning that a lot of houses on that street have issues with water in their basement already, and then adding to it, you know, has to have some effect, so.
Thank you. Anybody else in the back row? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Hi.
Do you mind if I drop this down a little?
Go ahead.
Nobody's next to me. Mike Dolan, live kind of across the street, seventeen twenty Manor Road. We've lived there for many years. It's a nice property, it's a nice street, twenty-four homes, pretty much all stone or all brick, consistency on height and size, square footage of each house. Most of the driveways are shared to create more greenery. This property was in front of us for years, and it's my contention that it's not, wasn't missed by the original development to just leave it one lot twice the size. It's my opinion, especially the house that's there, matches all the other houses, give or take, that the person who subdivided it could have easily got another lot out of it, but they did this on purpose by offsetting the house twenty feet instead of eight or ten. And as a result, in order to subdivide it, you have to create an irregular side yard, which will impact the existing house down the road for the next owner, because if it's an eight-foot setback on a side yard, well, they're only showing you the existing house, but the proposed new house goes back another thirty feet, and behind that goes a patio. So, if you ran a proposed addition to the existing house, that line cannot be fifteen feet off, which is twenty-five percent of the backyard. It should be straight, if you can do a straight line. So, in essence, if it was going to be two lots, you know, I'm assuming it was a builder or family member that said it's his own way years ago to create one lot. And if you drove down the street, which I encourage you all to do, you would see the nature of it. Now, we're not stopping what's okay to subdivide and build. There are some significant trees on the property. There was one taken down prematurely. Maybe they had the right to do that, but it was a significant tree, herald tree, I guess. And you're right, if you take all the trees down, and you got to put up ten or twenty or thirty trees, you can't put them on the lot. So, you're going to just give the money to the township to plant them elsewhere, which it takes away, every tree that comes down is a beauty from, you know, miles away or feet away. So, looking at that, knowing that they're asking for variances, waivers, it strikes me as this is the premier property in our whole area, and could be sold for economically a very good price, because there's no other properties that I'm aware of around there that you have that extra lot in size that you could put an addition on, you could put a swimming pool on, just have more land. And in today's market, real estate, it's a commodity. There's very few, these other houses are selling for lots, so just that if you put in a house that's going to be that much bigger, six or eight foot taller, it's just going to change the makeup. But the real thing is, does it pass the subdivision code? So, that's what I ask you guys to review. Thank you.
Middle row on this side? I know, I know, you don't have any. Back row, starting in that corner on this side? Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Hi.
I am Joanna Pittman. I live at eighteen oh nine Manor, so I'm on the other side of the lot. We've lived there two years. My husband Doug is in the back row. We have a five-month-old baby. So, I don't really, I can't read this, I don't get the lines, I don't know what I'm looking at. So, this isn't a very technical statement, I just thought I'd give my opinion. Echoing what others have said about the trees, one of the things, when we were looking at houses, we love the trees, I know they're our neighbors' trees, but we get a lot of shade on our patio, lots of birds, lots of wildlife. We love, like, looking at them, listening to the birds. We've gotten a lot of enjoyment. So, when I was looking at the plan, I saw they would all come down, and then magnolia in the front yard. I mean, that's a disappointment. I know it's their right, but just my opinion. Thinking of the driveway, a lot of us sit on our porches, you know, when you look down the row, we see front yards, ornamental trees, not really excited about seeing a car in the front yard. Everybody either parks on the street or pulls their cars back in the driveway. So, it's really nice to sit out there, wave to your neighbors, look down the row, see all the identical houses that are stone masonry. They basically all match. It is very charming. We loved that. I just don't, I'm not thrilled by the idea of having something that's obviously so new-looking, so different in a number of different ways. And again, with the water, we get water in our basement, and we have an empty lot next to us, so I'm nervous during construction, what's going to happen. Afterwards, it sounds like that's taken care of, but I don't know if during construction there's mitigation for water drainage where it's going to go. So, let's just-
I'm sorry, they are required to install improvements during construction to prevent mostly like mud, if you will, going out in the street, things like that. It's called erosion control plan.
Okay, good. But just a couple of my concerns kind of off the cuff, and I have a lot of neighbors here, and we've been talking about this, and I'm pretty sure they share my sentiments, so thank you for your time.
Okay. Yes, sir?
I'm the husband. I was an environmental teacher.
Name and address for the record.
Sorry, Doug Pittman, eighteen oh nine Manor Road, so the neighbor. I was an environmental teacher at Rander Middle School, and so hearing about the trees coming down is actually really important to me, including if to plant native species. However, it sounds like a lot of the trees will come down, they won't be replaced, wildlife will decrease. I'm also, though, now a social studies teacher, a history teacher, and something that attracted us to this area was the history. The homes are approaching a hundred years old, they're all uniform. So, to plant, or to bring in a home like this in the middle of the street that is not uniform, that is brand-new, does, I think, detract from the overall appeal, the, what I think was the ideal spot in Howard Town. So, I do think it actually detracts overall from our township, unfortunately. But that's just my opinion. I know that it is not our decision to make, I just wanted to share my two cents.
Thank you. Middle row, anyone?
I'll say something.
You don't have to, if you don't want to.
No, I thought of something that I wanted to say. My name is Rebecca Litwin. I live at seventeen oh nine Manor Road, so a few houses down. My concern is just with the traffic on the road. So, like somebody said, most people do park on the street, and with the concerns of parking, like, the driveway taking over the sidewalk, it's my belief that the owner would also park on the street. And it's a thin street, and it's also a street that a lot of people use to drop their kids off at the middle and, at the middle school. I'm also a teacher, and I leave for school when the public schools are starting, and so I'm constantly, like, going back and forth with the cars, and so this will just add to that traffic problem. I know it's only one or two cars, but that really makes a difference on a really thin street.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once, going twice, oh, okay.
Hello, my name's Andrew Furman. I live at seventeen hundred Manor Road, so across the street from the proposed lot. And I just want to kind of echo some of my neighbors' concerns. We really enjoy the trees on the existing lot, so would like to keep those. And I'd like to echo, you know, we like that all the houses on the road look the same. They're all built, I think, around nineteen thirty-nine, so we kind of enjoy that. And also, like some of the concerns voiced earlier around the irregular lot line with the, I think every single other house on the street has, you know, property lines that go straight back, just makes sense. This one has like an odd angle in it, so I wanted to echo those concerns that were voiced earlier. So, thanks.
Thank you. A couple of comments regarding architecture. Just so you know, the township doesn't have any real regulations, nor are they allowed to have any regulations regarding architecture, okay? So, there's not a lot that this board can do or the board of commissioners can do in regards to dictating how a structure or what a building looks like, okay? Just want to point that out. As far as the trees go, the shade tree commission will review this plan, they'll review it thoroughly, they'll offer recommendations or make requirements for, to the builder, to developer, as far as what trees get planted, you know, species, size, locations, things like that. So, if any of you are really concerned about trees and removal of the trees, I suggest that maybe you attend the shade tree commission. They usually meet on the fourth Monday of each month?
They are generally on the fourth Monday of each month. Their last meeting was this past Monday. So, they will likely be meeting through this plan, we'll say February twentieth, but don't quote me, because again, one of the few boards that I don't oversee. So, they would want to talk to somebody, Joe Celia in code enforcement.
But the schedule and the agenda for the shade tree commission should be on the township's website.
Yeah, the fourth Monday.
So, and then-
The meeting room behind this one that you come in through on the lobby, A and B.
And then, I assume all you close neighbors have received a notice from the zoning board that there's a meeting next Thursday night in this room. Well, they'll review the pros and cons of the variance request, okay? Again, the zoning board has authority to grant that approval. The planning commission merely makes recommendations to the board of commissioners. We don't approve a plan, we recommend approval or recommend denial, it's up to the board of commissioners to make the final decision. So, I want you guys all to know that. But in any event, moving forward, the applicant will go to the zoning board, and he'll probably, I don't know if they'll come back here before they meet with the shade tree commission or after. I would suggest they come back after so that we have those issues resolved with the trees, and then we'll meet again, assuming they go on February twenty-third or what, Kelly, twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth, whatever.
Twenty-eighth.
Okay. We'll meet again on the second Thursday in March, and that's where we'll maybe take final review and approval or disapproval of the plan.
They meet back here on February twenty-fourth, so it is possible that we, that your meeting will proceed the shade tree commission.
I still would like to see the shade tree commission get a bite at the apple before we make a recommendation.
We may be running into-
Or we make a recommendation based upon, conditioned upon the shade tree commission's-
Right, and that's what we generally do in those situations. I just don't want to see us run into an MBC time limitation issue. So, it, we'll say potentially the twenty-fourth, and we'll keep everybody updated.
All right, so that's all we're going to talk about this tonight. Again, unless someone else has any other questions about the process or what's going to happen down the line. Yeah, David?
If you, Angela mentioned the zoning hearing. If you haven't received notice, there is, you've probably seen it, there's a sign posted on the property describing the zoning meeting.
Kelly, when do we expect the county review letter?
Good question. I have received a receipt, I haven't received a receipt, actually, so let me get in touch with them. Things have been a little kinky since they moved, COVID and everything else, so I'll get in touch with them. Hopefully, we'll have it by the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Thank you, everyone, for coming. You're welcome to stay, although we're not really going to do anything. But it was nice seeing you all out, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We earned our pay tonight. Thank you. Right, great. I watched them online, uh, yeah. Yeah. Of course, it's a problem. Just, we're referring the engineers to talk. Okay, I wanna, I'm sorry, I give a quick update on our comprehensive plan. We had a meeting, oh, what do you need? Oh, thank you. Uh, the Steering Committee had a meeting last night. The, uh, uh, consultant for the township presented us with a preliminary draft plan, if there is such a thing. Uh, the official draft plan will be submitted to the township in the next week or so. Uh, and we also went through some, uh, uh, suggestions for cha-, changes in the zoning ordinance as far as uh, uses and, and things like that. So the, the plan, the comp plan is moving forward. Um, a rough schedule would be that the Steering Committee meets again on the fourth Wednesday of February, and they'll go through the draft plan. Uh, they'll make some suggestions for modifications or revisions. The consultant will make those revisions and formally submit the draft plan to the township for review. The, the, the comp plan has to be reviewed by local or adjacent municipalities, has to be reviewed by the County Planning Commission, and I think there's a forty-five day review period. It would also be.
In the school district, yeah.
In the school district, yes. And it'll be available online for anyone else in the township to look at. And after that forty-five day review period, then it would, the draft plan would come before the Planning Commission for its consideration. And that probably will be April, May, sometime in that timeframe.
We were talking May. Um, I think we may do the first Planning Commission meeting with the draft plan prior to the completion of the forty-five days. I don't think there's only going to be one Planning Commission meeting.
Nah, we'll probably have a couple of meetings.
What, thirty years, uh, of, uh, you know, needing to completely update a plan? So, um, so I think, uh, doing the first review of the draft plan in May, within like thirty-day period to have everybody look at it, and then, you know, anything following that is, is essentially the plan.
Okay.
Are you gonna meet or no? I wasn't able to follow. Meeting?
Well, there will be a meeting in April. There'll probably be a couple of meetings, April, May, depending upon how the first meeting goes, things like that. If, if any of you have life insurance premiums due, I suggest you make sure you pay them. Uh, any questions about the comp plan?
Steering Committee.
Yep.
Meeting, uh, you said February or March?
February.
February, fourth Wednesday in February.
Fourth, that's right.
That's the next event.
That's the next event, yes. Okay, uh, we have a final review of minutes from our October fourteenth Planning Commission meeting. Uh, I'll make a motion. We approve those minutes as written?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? No? Okay. Anybody else have anything they wanna bring up or mention, or I see that the township got that grant for the walking trail down at Merry Place?
Uh, that is what I've heard, yes.
And does that include the house?
Um, I believe it does.
You totally what?
I believe it does.
Oh, it does?
Uh, I have not been hugely included in those conversations. So, um, I know that there has been discussion about, um, you know, moving forward with, uh, those plans and how we are going to proceed regarding the house, regarding the trail, but nothing, uh, nothing formally has been discussed with me.
And Chuck, does that project include the intersection at Vermont and?
Um, there, the township does have a separate grant, a PennDOT multimodal grant that deals with that intersection, Angelo. So, it's gonna reconfigure that intersection, and also was part of it was connecting and trail from Merry Place to that intersection.
Are you still looking at it, or is the roundabout out of the question?
Uh, not out of the question, I don't think. PennDOT wants to look at some, some traffic through there first before they, they really get into what the final configuration would be. I'll tell you this, PennDOT liked the roundabout down there.
I know they did. Okay.
Takes up a little more land, but it seems to work.
If, what's your Chris Paul say, is Chris the Paul say as far as maybe starting work on that project? Is that like next year type of thing?
Well, let's put it this way. They got to go through a consultant selection process for that design. So, as you know, that takes a little time.
Okay.
So, I, I, I'd be guessing if I, if I gave you any date right now.
Alright, thanks, Chuck.
You're welcome.
Whatever happened to the, you talked about that roadway configuration at, um, Hardmore Avenue and Havreford?
Yes, that was one of the, one of the, I think that was a D C, the multimodal grant, or a PennDOT one, and maybe it was, but, um, they did not, the township did not receive that.
Okay, anybody have anything else? If not, I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.